Welcome to today's planning development control meeting of the Worcester City Council. It's Wednesday, December 9th 30 and I'm about to start the meeting. First of all, I'd like to call upon Dave Shaw, our senior democratic services officer, to do a roll call of members of the committee present today.
Yes, thank you, Chair. councillor Clea?
Present.
Thank you, councillor Evans, Chair.
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Present.
Councillor Laming?
Present.
Councillor McLean?
Present.
Councillor Reed?
Present.
Councillor Raffel?
Present.
And councillor Rutter?
Present.
Thank you, that's all members are present, Chair.
Thank you, and the officers present today?
Yes, yes, of course, I'll continue with the officers that are in the meeting today. I'm joined in the St Giles' Room in the city offices by Julie Pinnock, Service Lead Built Environment. We also have present online Catherine Knight for representing legal. And also within the St Giles' Room this morning for item six, the corner house, we have Catherine Watson as the planning case officer. And Catherine Watson is also presenting item seven, Hazelwood. And for item eight in the morning, Sarsenstone, we have Hannah Harrison. I'm Dave Shaw from Democratic Services and also supported today from Democratic Services with Nancy Graham. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a few housekeeping issues before we start with the main agenda. Can I advise that this meeting is being audio recorded and live streamed from the council's website? And a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting, where it can be found next to the meeting details, where the recording will remain thereafter. Members of the committee are used to keeping their microphones and cameras off unless they're speaking. And if we refer to a page or paragraph in our reports, please could you indicate where you are referencing to? A member of the public, I will call upon you when it's your turn to speak, if you could in the meantime also keep your microphones on mute and turn your cameras off. This is because it does aid the technology. If we have too many cameras and microphones on, then it causes all sorts of mayhem in the systems. Members of the committee, as you know, if there are any IT problems, would you let officers know? Because as you're aware, it may affect your right to vote. Members of the public, could you please make sure that you've turned your phones off or put them on silent? When it is your turn to speak, members of the public, a clock will appear on the screen and you will have three minutes to speak. We'll have to stop you at the end of your sentence after the three minutes. But don't go away because there could be questions from members of the committee for you, points of clarification. Reminder to members of the committee to use the chat function, which the vice-chairman councillor Rutter picks up very ably and informs me whether you want to ask a question or join the debate. And first of all, are there any apologies to deputy members? I don't think so.
No, that is correct, Chair, all members are present today.
And disclosures of interest? I think we've now got into the custom of declaring those before the item concerned. No one wishes to speak. I don't believe we have any sub-commissions to set up?
That is correct, there's no sub-commissions to be set up.
And we have no minutes at the moment of the last meeting. Could I ask members if you could unmute your microphones? And if you are agreeable, accept the update sheet?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed. Thank you.
Yes, yeah, agreed.
Thank you. So that is accepted as an addendum to the main report. So we move on to the business items. The first item, agenda item six, 20/00949-FUL, the corner house fifteen Berrawick Close Winchester. The report, sorry, the report is on page nine. And these are material amendments to application number 18/01432-FUL, to amend conditions numbers nine, the landscaping, 12, the arboretum cultural impact assessment, and 13, the approved plans. The case officer is Cat Watson and I can see that Cat has got her slides on the screen. So, good morning, Cat.
Morning, Chair.
And over to you.
Thank you, Chair. And just before I begin, I have an additional verbal update to the update that's on the update sheet at the moment. So, condition seven has been amended. Unfortunately, it's not carried through to the update sheet. But it removes permitted development rights in classes A, B, C and E. And there's also an additional sentence stating that no gates are to be installed at any time to the southwest facing access on Berrawick Close. So that's, just to clarify, that matter unfortunately didn't pull through onto the update sheet.
Thank you very much, thank you. If you'd like to go ahead with your presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So the application is section 73, material amendment to the 2018 planning consent for a new dwelling and associated works at fifteen Berrawick Close. So, the main changes are the relocation of the approved access on to Berrawick Road. And that will be moving on to Berrawick Close. So we can see at the top left-hand corner, this is the approved plan. So you can see the access here on to Berrawick Road. And then to the bottom of the slide, we've got the plan currently under consideration with the access on to Berrawick Close. To facilitate the move of that access, there has been some internal rearrangement in the site, relocating car parking spaces. And here we have the ground floor plan and that's as built. So we can see the access on to Berrawick Close. Originally, the access on Berrawick Close was to be for construction vehicle access and was to be stopped up in favour of the Berrawick Road access. But it's now proposed to retain that as the permanent access. Here we can see the east and south elevations as built. So to the top, we've got the east elevation, which we can see there. And then to the bottom, we've got the south elevation, which is what faces on to Berrawick Road. And then we've got the west elevation at the top, which is what we see from Berrawick Close. And you can see the access just to the bottom here. And then the section through the building on Berrawick Close. And here we have some photographs. So this is the current state of construction. And we can see the access on to Berrawick Close being used by construction vehicles. And this is a view of the scheme of the building from Berrawick Close, Road, sorry. And then we've got a couple more photographs. So the top photograph shows, it's taken from Berrawick Road, looking towards the access on Berrawick Close. And then the bottom photograph is taken from further up Berrawick Close. And we can see the hoardings and the access is just behind the cars. And then again, looking from the junction between Berrawick Close and Berrawick Road, again, we can see the access here. And again, just looking out from Berrawick Close on to Berrawick Road. And then on Berrawick Road, looking up towards the access again. And then finally, we've got a photograph taken from the end of Berrawick Close, looking down towards the site, which is right at the end of this view. So that concludes my presentation. My recommendation is to approve subject to the conditions stated in the report. And I'm happy to answer any questions, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Cat. So we'll move on to the public speaking. We have two objectors and I know that you're both here, Mr John McCauley and Mr Dickens. So good morning to you both, if you'd like to put your cameras and your microphones on. Now you have three minutes in total. I really don't mind how you share that or which order you go in. And obviously, you will both be around for questions afterwards, if there are any from the committee. So, who's going to start?
Mr Dickens.
Okay.
You have three minutes.
I'm Colin Dickens with the immediate neighbours at Seven Berwick Road. Will be overlooked by a room height bedroom window giving direct line of sight to a master bedroom, lounge and patio. Earlier this year, WCC tree officers and the applicant's agents agreed that the felling of trees on their eastern boundary in August 2019 breached a planning condition in the decision notice on the previous application. It was agreed that as mitigation, the three boundary trees felled be replaced like for like as shown in submitted plans 833, 11J, 12H and 13J as A, B and C. We ask you to support the planning officer, that if permission is granted, planning condition six be imposed to plant and protect new trees A, B and C on page 19, in mitigation for failed condition trees on our boundary. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is John McCauley and I'm objecting on behalf of 12 residents of Berrawick Close. All previous plans that have been approved to show an entrance on to Berrawick Road, we agree to review by planning, highways and the applicants. This proposal has failed to provide any reason to gain. Both residents strongly object to changing the sentence. Our view, it is clearly a safety issue, the entrance is too close to the junction and overlaps the current parking bays. Highways report say that the entrance could be blocked at times by the bays. Highways traffic are now and in 2017, report that a TRO will be required for the bay to be moved. Why has the applicant not applied for it? How can planning approve this? Next slide, please, visibility. Park cars in the bay will obscure sightlines when vehicles exit the highway. The engineering, highway engineers at Berrawick Close, did a TRO require low traffic road. However, it makes no mention of the narrow width of the road and that there are 16 large houses. Guarded as a low traffic road. In addition, the highways engineer's assessment on safety on the close states, access was closer to the junction than might be permitted on other roads. Why therefore should this be allowed when the Berrawick Road entrance has no such restriction? The application still does not include a landscape plan, despite numerous requests from the planners and the residents to show how the full visibility required from highways will be achieved. Plans of November the 18th are incorrect, which I heard changed this morning, showing a gate. But we therefore request this proposal is rejected and that the committee listen to the residents, rather than a developer that after the closing date constantly...
Chair, for three minutes, please.
It is. I'm going to have to stop you there. Thank you very much, but there could be questions of clarification for you. Members, on my iPad, that was a little distorted, I did hear it. But you might perhaps want some clarification on points which Mr McCauley or Mr Dickens said. I would like, Mr McCauley, you mentioned you were concerned about a condition. And I thought you said condition six, did you?
Sorry, the condition was the one that was raised this morning by Cat in relation to the entrance on Berrawick Close, shows on the last plan, shown on November the 18th, still having a gate.
Right. And Mr Dickens, you mentioned a concern about a condition?
Yes, as with the immediate neighbours on the eastern boundary, I think one of your pictures, if you go back a couple of slides, just shows that, how that one. Yeah, so on the left is the site before the trees were felled. And then on the right, after the trees are felled, you can see the patio in the bottom there. And that's out of one of our house master bedroom window towards the development. So they have agreed to put condition trees in, it's in there. We just asked the committee to support condition six, which Cat has already put into her report.
Okay, well, condition six doesn't talk about trees, but I do get the gist of what you're saying. It's just that condition six talks about sustainability.
Oh, right, okay.
Okay, you're...
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the committee, vice-chair, were there any points of clarification?
None indicated, Chair, thank you.
No, so thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming along today. If you could mute your microphones and turn your cameras off. And obviously, you're going to be staying with us, you are welcome to stay as long as you like. So we have now the ward, one of the ward councillors, councillor Loney. Good morning, councillor Loney.
Morning, Chairman.
And when you're ready, you have five minutes.
Right, thank you. This is not the first time I or one of my ward colleagues have been in front of the planning committee talking about proposals for this property, which has so appalled local residents in its visual impact on the neighbourhood. Regardless of that, when looking at the application before you today, the main issue is that parking in the road and neighbouring streets is very limited and normally occupied during the day. The proposed entrance encroaches on to parking bays and no visibility displays are provided. The photos provided by Cat of parked vehicles in Berrawick Close show how perfectly parked cars can obscure the entrance and pavement in front of it from traffic coming along Berrawick Close. Access in and out of the drive is easily blocked by a vehicle. While the two parking bays on site are technically adequate for the property, the basement addition has turned this from a very large two-bedroom property to a huge, only technically, two-bedroom property. Extra vehicles in that what is a long driveway cannot reverse out safely in the current setup. The plans also still show a gate on the access, which has been declared unacceptable by the highway authority. And given the history of the site and the developers carry on regardless and ask later approach, a condition is needed preventing one from being built. I believe this is dealt with by the update, but I would appreciate confirmation of that. Gate or no gate, I don't believe that this access is acceptable without moving the parking bays, restricting the height of the hedges on that boundary and improving the visibility displays. And would ask that the application be refused unless those issues are resolved. Mr and Mrs Dickens have also highlighted the detrimental effect the removal of boundary trees has had on their property. Trees on the site have been felled when they should have been preserved. And shrubbery has also been removed for the original access on to Berrawick Close, on to Berrawick Road, sorry. If the access is to go on to Berrawick Close, then the planting scheme should not only include the trees referred to in the condition, but restore the previous garden field to the Berrawick Road frontage, making the building less incongruous in its setting. The committee, in my view, quite rightly turned down the original application. And since it was allowed as appeal, change after change has been made and conditions ignored. This is a classic example of how many developers at every stage push the boundaries to achieve exactly what they wanted in the first place, regardless of our policy or the sterling efforts that our planners put in to produce a better result. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, councillor Loney. We'll just leave a few minutes for members of the committee to indicate whether they want to ask further questions. But I can confirm that there is a condition, extra condition added to condition seven, which does say that no gates should be installed. And we will clarify exactly what it says, but it is the Berrawick Close.
Yeah, thank you.
Vice-chair?
There are no questions indicated, Chair, thank you.
No questions. Thank you very much, councillor Loney.
Thank you.
Cat, did you want to give us any updates on what you've heard?
Hey, Chair, no, I don't currently have any updates. But I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any, thank you.
Yeah, some of those issues will come up as we go through the report, which we will do now. So starting on page 32, any questions on principle of development and design and layout? Should I start? Under design and layout, page 32, it says it's partly retrospective. It looks heavily retrospective to me. And was there any contact between the agent or the applicant and yourself on any pre-app discussions over changing what was originally approved?
No, Chair, there was no contact prior to the submission of the application other than to a brief inquiry as to whether or not a access on Berrawick Close would need planning consent, which of course I confirmed that it would. But there was no detailed pre-application, it was dealt with through the submission of the planning application.
Chair, if I might, we're just looking at the report from page 11, aren't we, through to page 15?
Did I give the wrong page number?
I think, yeah, possibly, I just thought to clarify.
I did, thank you for that clarification. No, I did. I did. I'm still looking at principles of development and design and layout on page 11, not the page I said.
Thank you, Chair.
And my question would have been the same.
Yes.
About pre-app. I see that councillor Reed, you've got a hand up?
Thank you, Chairman, no, the correction has been made, the clarification on the page number.
Thank you.
I have a question from councillor Laming, Chair.
Councillor Laming?
Yes, thank you. I seem to remember this from previous planning committees. One of the biggest bones of contention was the actual design and layout of the access to the property. And we've had several different proposals for this. And we came down, I thought, to one that was acceptable on to Berwick Road. And here we have a retrospective changing it. And we've also seen the trees being pulled out as well. So I'm rather unhappy about that, Cat. Can you explain why this entrance would be acceptable in that particular position? Because the design of the property seems to have changed dramatically from the original grant of the permission.
Thank you, Chair. So as a matter of course, with a new access on to a residential road, Hampshire County Council highways were consulted, particularly because it's relatively close to the junction. I know that I received some written advice stating that, and as I've set out in my report, that because the road was considered by them to be a relatively quiet road, that the access in its current position would not justify an objection from them on the grounds of highway safety. Subsequent to that, I believe one of Hampshire County Council's highway engineers did visit the site and make an assessment and they came back with the same conclusion. To answer your question about the internal layout or the building, there's no significant change to the actual building. I believe that there's some alterations to the basement level. But in terms of what you would see if you went on site, there's no change there other than the internal layout just to accommodate the new access and parking spaces in a slightly different area and to facilitate that. And with reference to the trees along the boundary with number seven Berrawick Road, yes, they were on the approved plans to be retained. Unfortunately, they were removed. And our tree officer, Ivan Gerdler, has been involved and has been in discussions with Mr and Mrs Dickens and also the applicant to ensure that those trees are replaced with trees, mature, semi-mature trees, to provide some instant mitigation. But of course, they will need some time to grow up. And Ivan's been involved in choosing the species of trees, approving those and where they're going to be planted and how they're going to be maintained and cared for within the next five years, as is our normal requirement. So I hope that answers your questions, but happy to answer any more, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice-Chair, any further questions on principle of development, design and layout?
No, Chair, we have questions on further parts of the report.
Right, so shall we move on then to impact on the character of the area and the neighbour property? And a landscape and trees?
So we have councillor Reed with a question, Chair.
Councillor Reed?
Yes, Chairman, my wife's phone's going like mad as well. Two points, please, if I may. The vehicle parking arrangement, I note that there is no hammerhead as such. Because if they're parking bays, they can't be part of a hammerhead because you can't turn the car around. So what arrangement has been made for ensuring the car leaves in a forward gear? And enters in a forward gear?
Yeah, the highways parking is the next topic, but we'll take it now as you've asked the question.
Thank you, Chair, sorry, thank you, Chair. It's not a requirement for a vehicle to access the site and leave the site in a forward gear. However, within the site, there is sufficient room to turn so that you can leave in a forwards gear. And I think there was a query, was there a query about the on-street parking space? Or was that to come later?
That was the next question, Chairman. The on-street parking, the fact that it overlaps part of the access into the said property. Could you just remind us who is responsible for inquiring that this meets the clarification with Hampshire County Council? Is it us or is it just purely the applicant?
Thank you, Chair. It's the applicant who would need to apply to Hampshire County Council for a traffic regulation order in order to move those parking spaces away from the entrance to the site. So it's not something that, as the city council, it's not something that we can enforce the applicant to do. It would be a matter for the applicant to liaise with Hampshire County Council to arrange for the relocation of those parking spaces. Thank you, Chair.
So, Chairman, can I just add a supplementary? So if we see that there's a problem or a possible problem, we do not notify Hampshire County Council? Is what you're saying?
Thank you, Chair. On this occasion, it was, I did discuss this with Hampshire County Council as part of a wider conversation with them. And at that stage, they confirmed that it was, it was the applicant that would need to approach Hampshire County Council directly to arrange for the relocation of the spaces. So it's not, it's not something as standard that we would raise with them. But obviously, in this instance, where there's been a lot of concern from local residents, it was something that I discussed with Hampshire County Council directly. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chairman.
On this note, the ward councillor did raise these issues and also the height of the hedge should be kept to a level where visibility could be obtained from cars exiting from that entrance. Is it possible or is it unreasonable to put on an informative advising the applicant to discuss with the county council the alterations to the parking bays and the height of the hedge?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, that could be added as an informative, but I don't see any reason why that wouldn't be acceptable. So yes, we can, we could add that if that's what you and the members would like, thank you.
Yeah, we'll ask members later. We can't condition those things though, can we? Because it's out of our control, but we could put an informative on.
That's correct, Chair, yes, thank you.
Right, so we seem to have drifted on into highways and parking, so we'll include that in, as well as the impact on the character of the area and landscape and trees. Vice Chair, any more questions from the committee?
No, Chair, and in fact, it was my fault that we drifted unduly fast into highways because I hadn't realised that my councillor Reed's question was on highways, so my apologies for that.
It's obviously a burning issue on this application. So if there are no more, are there any more questions on anything else in the report? The conditions?
And could I just have a point of clarification on the conditions, Chair?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Cat, for your report. Can I just confirm that we have conditioned that the permitted development rights have been removed from this application so that any further changes or extensions or anything being built in the garden or anything at all, changes to windows, should come to the planning department for authorisation before anything is done? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. And let's hope the developer and the owner is taking due note. Thank you.
So there being no more questions, Vice Chair?
No further questions, Chair.
So we'll move into debate?
I'd like to make a few comments, if I may.
Thank you, councillor Rutter.
Thank you, Chair. This is a very difficult application, which is why it's before this committee, originally refused by this committee and then allowed on appeal. It's to be regretted that the inspector didn't agree with us that this was out of character and shouldn't have been allowed, but there we go. And I think, given that fact, there's very little that we can do other than what is recommended in these conditions. So we are conditioning that the trees that were removed be replaced with substantial species that will grow quickly. We have taken away permitted development rights, so any further changes to this must come before the planning officers, before they are instigated. And there should be no gates onto the road, onto the close, because there's no space for those. And that's all conditioned. I think that our officers have done as much as they possibly could, given the circumstances of the appeal acceptance of this application. And therefore, I'd commend the officers' contribution here and support it regretfully. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further contributions to debate? I would like to...
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, Chair, carry on, please.
I've just finished what I'm going to say, and then I'll ask you, councillor Reed. I would like to echo what the vice chairman has said. It's very annoying for the committee to have something which is coming in with substantial changes and disappointing for the neighbours when they just take trees down, which were due to be retained. And presumably, the inspector had taken all those things into consideration when allowing the appeal. And then we find before us now no consultation with the local authority and then all these changes having taken place. So taking up the extra points, committee, do you agree that we should have an informative also about the parking bays? We can't put a condition on about the parking bays, but we are advising the applicant in the interests of highway safety to liaise with the county council about alteration to the parking bays and also taking advice from the county council about the height of the hedge, which will be there when the vehicle's accessed. So I'll leave committee to let me know whether we put that on. And the conditions, yes, we, condition six, we are insisting on mature trees. There is an added sentence to condition seven as well about gates. The county advised against sliding gates and we have put in as part of condition seven, no gates to be installed. Cat read out the full details, but basically it's at the Barrowwick Close entrance. So yes, otherwise, I think, you know, we've done everything we could within our power, but disappointing that we've got this coming in with all these alterations. Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Lerni hit the nail on the head to some degree by the areas of concern that she had brought up to this meeting. I think an informative, I can't disagree with the informative, I think if that's the best we can do, that is the best, unfortunately. What does worry me yet again is the fact that members who have sat on the planning committee for many years will always remember the words of, "You must leave the property in a forward gear." Now, what has been said this morning says that's not necessarily the case. That worries me a little bit because next time something comes up with no turning eggs, we don't appear to have any reasoning for asking for safety. So it is a problem. With regard to the parking space, the on-road parking space, which will partially block access to free movement to and from the property, that is a bit concerning because we are leaving it to the applicant to apply or not to apply. I can guess which one it will be, possibly. I'm not happy with that particular element of it, and unfortunately, I don't think I'm going to be able to support the officer's recommendation. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Gordon Smith, did I see you put your hand up?
Chair, we have two others before councillor Gordon Smith, I apologise. We have councillor Lanning and councillor Clear and then councillor Gordon Smith, thank you.
Sorry, councillor Gordon Smith, I should have left it to the vice chair. So councillor Lanning?
Yes, thank you. I concur with what councillor Reed said. This has always been a contentious plot and we went to a great deal of trouble before to ensure that the vehicles could leave in a forward gear. And the inspector also approved plans for that to go through from that particular direction. I feel that leaving the site to the close is quite dangerous unless you stop all parking in that area. The hedge is too high. We seem to have got to a situation where people get planning permission by whatever means and then do what they feel like doing. And it really goes against a lot of the ways that we look at planning. I agree with councillor Lerni on her points as well, so I cannot support this, I'm sorry. I should be voting against this.
Thank you, councillor Clear.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I'm sorry for the residents, I really am that this has come back to us, but we are where we are. But I do agree with the comments already made by my fellow councillors and I so agree that an informative, if possible, is added, which is being suggested by the Chair, so I do support that. And also, I hope and I thoroughly support condition six, that that will be adhered to from now on. So unfortunately, I do support the application. Thank you, Chair.
Right, councillor Gordon Smith, thank you, councillor Clear. Councillor Gordon Smith?
Yes, I just thought it might be useful, we've been talking about getting them to plant semi-mature trees, is actually define a size to go in there? And something like forty-five to fifty-centimetre girth would be quite a substantial tree, something like that. That was all.
Yeah, thank you.
Otherwise, I'll put in a tiddler and everyone will have to wait for years.
Yes, absolutely, yes, that's the trouble. Cat, I'll come back to you with questions here. The last point that councillor Gordon Smith brought up, condition six, says there is a landscape plan and so on. You stated that this will be mature trees. And was the girth or the maturity of the trees specified?
Yes, Chair, on the ground floor plan, which also shows the trees and marks out the specific trees that are to be planted, it does give, it gives the species and it also gives the height at which they're to be planted. So we've got a holly which is going to be between four and a half and five metres in height when planted. And then there's a laurel, a cherry laurel, I think, and then a prunus, and they're both four metres to five point five. So yes, there are sizes specified on the plan. As discussed with Ivan, it's what he specified would be acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, last question from me. On page thirteen of our report, we did consult with Hampshire County Council over this exit stroke entrance onto Barrowwick Close. And the fact that it was close to a junction and all the other things that the councillors have mentioned, it does say in our report, the risk to safety is not so significant as to justify a refusal of this part of the development. Would you like to just clarify that consultation with the highways?
Yes, certainly, Chair. Yes, the, they were, highways were consulted because of the proximity to the junction of this access and because it joins onto a classified road being Barrowwick Road. As I, as I, yes, you're correct, in my report, I had extensive discussions with the highway engineer because of all the public concern. And when they came and assessed the new access, the existing access, and said that on a different, on a busier road, and we're talking about Barrowwick Close here, then it would be too close to the junction, enough so that there might be an impact on highway safety for cars emerging onto Barrowwick Road and turning into Barrowwick Close. But because it's a, they identified the road as a quiet, relatively quiet cul-de-sac, then they couldn't justify, there was no, there were no grounds in terms of their sort of highway safety criteria for them to raise an objection to that part of the development. And of course, our Hampshire County highways are our statutory consultancy for highways. So I had to go with their assessment, a professional assessment of the access and not pursue that as a reason for refusal. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I thank you, Cat. Vice Chair, any further?
Yes, Chair, we have councillor Rafael, Chair for debate, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Reed and councillor Lanning were probably at the meeting where, in the days when we used to get to County, County Council traffic officers, they both said that moving into a property and leaving in forward gear was not necessary. And that was probably two or three years ago. So if they're going to refuse on that, they're in for a hiding. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Rafael. Any further debate? Vice Chair?
No further debate, Chair.
Right, so we'll come to the vote. We have conditions, and just make sure I've got absolutely right page, conditions on page thirteen and fourteen and fifteen. And then we have an extra condition on our update sheet with the extra addition of the words to the effect that there should be no gates installed. I think you mentioned southwest, Cat, but that meant Barrowwick Close. And I would like informatives added, page sixteen are informative concerning the consultation with the highways over the parking bays. And I'm sorry that we've got to leave it to the applicant to do it, because we should be able to do that ourselves, but it seems we can't. And also the height of the hedge consultation in order that there's safety when exiting the side. Mrs Pennitt, did I see your cameras on? Did you want to add something there?
Yes, please, Chair, I just wanted to add to what Catherine had already set out to you at the beginning in the update. And I was suggesting, rather than just say a no gates, that we actually remove part two of class A, which removes permitted development rights for future boundary treatments as well, so that would say no gate walls, fences or other means of enclosure. And I think, given our concern about the hedging, you know, the fact that hedging can be trimmed back to maintain visibility, but if hard boundary treatment is erected there, that may well add to future concerns. So I think if we amend condition seven, which already removes classes A, B, C and E of part one... part one, and if we add that we'll remove part two, class A, which is the bit about fences, walls and gates and other means of enclosure. Thank you Chair, and obviously the informative that you've already referenced.
Thank you. I'd be quite keen to mention gates because the gates apparently are still there. So that condition will actually have the word gates in it.
We'll add that in Chair, but we, what makes it safer is if we actually reference the piece of legislation in the town and country planning act, which otherwise proffers those committed development rights. If we remove those by specific reference, but we can add in the words, i.e. no gates, fences, walls or other means of enclosure.
Thank you, thank you, that's very useful, thank you. So that is what we're voting on. This application has been recommended for approval and they will take the roll call for councillors to state how they're going to vote. Over to you Dave.
Thank you Chair. Councillor Clear?
Four.
Councillor Evans?
Four.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Four.
Councillor Leamy?
Against.
Councillor McLean?
Four.
Councillor Reed?
Against.
Councillor Rafael?
Four.
And councillor Ritter?
Four.
So six, four and two against Chair.
So that application is approved. Thank you very much. We will be moving on to agenda item seven. Do we need a few minutes to get the presentation up on the screen? Yes please Chair. We will be moving on to agenda items.
Chair, just to inform the committee, we've just let the members of the public into the meeting for the next item.
Thank you. Please let me know when we're ready to go. Is that Mr Spencer in the corner of my screen?
Good morning Chair.
Good morning. It won't be quite your time to speak, so if you could just turn your camera and your mic off and I will call upon you after the presentation of the application. Thank you.
Chair, through yourself, could I just confirm that Mr Bevan, Jim Bevan, his agent is in the meeting?
Are we ahead of time Dave?
Yes, slightly, slightly Chair, but Mr Bevan was in the lobby and I did admit him, but I can't see him now in the meeting. Can we just confirm that Mr Richard Wickens is present please?
Yes Brad.
Chair, good, Mr Bevan's here now, let me.
We'll just wait a few minutes for Mr Bevan.
Councillor Gordon Smith, could you turn your speaker off please?
Good morning Mr Bevan. So after Mr Bevan.
Thank you. Yes, thank you Chair, to confirm that all public speakers are now in the meeting for the next item, thank you.
So we will move on to agenda item seven, twenty slash oh one five nine seven slash F U L. This is an application at Hazelwood, twenty-nine Downside Road in Winchester. It's the condition two, condition two to be updated to reflect approved drawings. So have I read that correctly? Is there anything else we're considering? Is that correct? Cat?
Yes, that's correct Chair, thank you.
So the case officer is Cat Watson again and when you're ready Cat, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Thank you Chair. The application is section seventy-three, application to amend the approved plans condition in line with following from an inspector's decision to approve the previous iteration of the site. Some further amendments have been made in line with that. So the site is on Downside Road, it's for, the original consent was for three new dwellings. So here we can see at the top left-hand corner, we've got the approved scheme. So we've got dwelling two at the bottom, dwelling one at the top and dwelling three to the left-hand side. And below we can see the implemented site plan. So the site has been built out largely. The changes are to plot two. So there is now, the approved, plans approved by the inspector included a detached garage to the front of the plot. This has now been removed and there is now a store that you can see to the, the side adjacent to the boundary with plot one. There's also some elevational change to all of the dwellings. So plot one, you can see that they've, well, they've amended the chimney shape, they've also amended the, the front door. These are minor amendments, but cumulatively, they do require consent for those. Also to the rear, they've just changed the configuration of the door. And again on the side, we've got a repositioned side window, that's on the south elevation. Plot two, again, we can see at the top here, that's the new store attached to the side of the house. And then at the bottom, we can see that from the rear. And then plot, the two south and north elevations remain the same. Plot three, again, we can just see the top left-hand corner, there's some minor changes to the configuration of the window and the sliding doors. And on the front elevation, to the top right, we can see that there's a change in the fencing there. And then to the rear of the dwelling, there's the addition of some solar panels there. Here we've got some photos, so these are recent photos of the site. So to the left, we've got plot one and we can see the detached garage associated with that. Plot two on the right, again, we can see the entrance into the parking area. Plot two, we can see the store here on the left-hand side. Plots one and two, we can see the relationship between those. And finally, plot three, so we can just see that as built and the attached garage just to the right there. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, thank you Chair.
Thank you very much. So we'll move first of all into public speaking. We have one objector.
Chair, Chair, it's Dave Shaw here. I think in chat we've had an indication from councillor Reed that he's having to withdraw from consideration of this application.
Okay, right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have one objector, Mr Spencer, and I know you're here, Mr Spencer, because we've spoken already, if you'd like to put your microphone and your camera on, good morning.
Good morning.
And when you're ready, you have three minutes and the clock will come on the screen to indicate your time. Over to you.
Chair, councillors, for the committee members who've reviewed Shaw's prior applications, it's not going to surprise you that I and other local residents have a real issue with the council's proposed approval of these dwellings, particularly plot two, which is in clear breach of CP two into DM two. A little history here, upon approving a prior application, Julie Pinnock in April twenty nineteen confirmed that the council's decision was because plot two had an integral garage and therefore provided for a more generous first floor plan, which provides a good-sized three-bedroom family home. So in April twenty nineteen, this committee linked CP two to the presence of an integral garage. Fast forward to the current application, you'll see that not only does plot two not now have an integral garage, it also has an additional external store. Having used the garage to justify plot two's adherence to CP two, what justification can the council possibly now have to approve this? You can't use CP two, there's no garage. You can't use DM two. This plot is now one thousand square feet larger than you allow under DM two. May I also remind today's Chair that in January twenty nineteen, you and other councillors here voted against the prior application, saying then that a smaller development was already too large and cramped. Plot two is the largest new build three-bed house on the market and the fact that it's sold doesn't justify the size either. My message here is that this process is flawed. This application is ridiculous. It's clear that the council has no justification for approving this. So why are you even considering it? Is it because you intend on making the lives of your constituents miserable by ignoring policy and approving plans to hit your development targets? Perhaps you're less worried about me going to the ombudsman and more concerned that Shaw will take this to the inspector? Well, if you're willing to ignore and disregard your own policies because of an inspector, what are we even doing here? You have policies that you have written that you now can't or won't enforce because the decisions that you've made in the run-up to today were wrong. There is no way you should approve this. It breaches CP two, it breaches DM two. Policy DM sixteen on overlooking neighbours has been ignored. Policy DM seventeen regarding resident safety has been ignored. There's already been a death on Downside Road and to avoid another injury, I urge the committee today to ensure that traffic calming measures are installed on the access track. Otherwise you are signing off on an accident waiting to happen, which I hold Shaw and this committee accountable for. Chair, councillors, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr Spencer. There could be some points of clarification from committee for you. Just wait for the vice chair to tell me if any.
No questions indicated Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr Spencer. So we move on then to the ward councillor, who wishes to speak today, one of the ward councillors, councillor Lerni. Good morning again councillor Lerni.
Morning again. We've been very efficient in the use of our time in our ward.
Oh no, one out of the three is fine. You have five minutes when you're ready.
Right, thank you Chairman. Again, this is a property which has involved both I and my ward colleagues previously and has highlighted similar issues around developers not only pushing policy boundaries but driving a coach and horses through them. When a two-bedroomed house costs three-quarters of a million pounds, half as much again, and a three-bedroomed house more than three times as much as a good-sized three-bedroom family home with a decent garden in the area, these new developments are not providing the kind of affordable two and three-bedroom accommodation policy CP two was aimed at achieving. Matters of principle really are involved here and it does demonstrate how important it is that in the new locs plan, you define the size of properties using area ranges rather than an arbitrary number of bedrooms. This is a partly retrospective application and the issues raised about the narrow access and impact on the neighbours have indeed proved problematic, with an improved surface leading to vehicles zooming down a very narrow track without leaving space to pass pedestrians and cyclists safely. If the application is passed, development rights should continue to be withheld, given the size of the properties and the limited amenity space for that type of house remaining on the site. In addition, it's important that the obscure glass window on the south-facing aspect of plot two overlooking the neighbours be retained to maintain their privacy. And the condition requiring this is very much needed. Much as with the previous application, I appreciate that the committee at this point may feel it can't, but ward members, neighbours and the many objectors felt it was important that our voices were heard on this. Yet another partly implemented application where we're being asked to approve things retrospectively. Hopefully in twenty twenty-one, we'll be able to reinstate the planning tour and this will definitely be a site I would encourage a visit to. Backland development may be hidden, but the precedents created do have a cumulative impact on communities and the character of areas. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you very much councillor Lerni. I was just checking that condition three does state that the window of plot two first floor will be glazed and obscured, just checking that. Any questions for councillor Lerni?
No questions Chair.
Thank you very much councillor Lerni, thank you. And then finally, we have two supporters, Mr Beevan, who's the agent, or Bevan is it? Mr Wickens, who's the applicant. Good morning gentlemen.
Good morning. I'll be speaking for the entirety of the three minutes, if that's okay Chair.
Yes, that's fine. And as Mr Wickens is registered to speak, he can of course join in at the end if there are any questions he wants to answer.
Indeed, thank you very much.
So it's Mr Bevan, is that I said it incorrectly?
That's right, yes, thank you.
So when you're ready, Mr Bevan, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning Chair, good morning councillors, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm the planning agent acting on behalf of the applicant. Set up by Cat, the application before you seeks to make a number of minor material amendments to the three-house scheme consented at appeal in July of this year. The vast majority of the amendments are due to the evolution of plans from the planning drawing stage to the technical drawing stage. A good example of this being the location and size of solar panels. Before detailed design and engineering calculations are procured, it's impossible to accurately assess the size and locations that the panels should be to meet the required energy standards. Another example of this being the location of vents and flues. The only significant amendment to the application is the removal of the external garage on plot two in favour of an additional surface car parking space. Having marked out where the consented garage would have been, the applicant felt that it compromised the outlook of the drawing room. To compensate for the loss of the storage function of the external garage, the applicant proposes to erect an attached store to the northern elevation of the dwelling. The store will measure approximately three by five metres and will provide ancillary storage for the main dwelling for things like bikes, garden equipment, golf clubs, etc. It's important to note that the construction would not facilitate conversion to residential accommodation as it's proposed to be single-skin brickwork with a blocked paved floor and a simple flat roof, none of which would be insulated. It's important to note that none of the amendments will form, will result in a formal quantum that is materially different to the approved dwellings and nor will they result in any additional residential floor area. It's not therefore considered that there would be an additional harm caused to the amenity of neighbouring properties. Taking a moment to address the comments received from neighbours, the proposed store will be smaller than the consented garage, the obscured glazing in the first floor window has now been installed, the bat and bird boxes have been installed and the applicant is willing to accept the restriction of committed development rights that are contained within the proposed conditions. In particular, I'd like to reiterate that there is no maximum dwelling size under CP two. The appeal inspector clarified this in his statement. As shown at the end of the officer's presentation, the dwellings have been built to an incredibly high standard and will make a good addition to the Winchester housing stock. I would kindly ask that the committee follow the officer's recommendation in voting to approve this application in order the site can be beneficially occupied. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr Bevan. We'll just wait for councillors to indicate on chat whether they wish to ask you any further clarification points. Vice Chair, any further?
No, no questions indicated Chair.
So thank you very much, Mr Bevan and Mr Wickens. Thank you very much. And Mr Wickens, thank you very much for coming along today. Thank you. Cat, any updates that you want to give us in the light of what you've heard from the public speaking?
I'd just like to clarify, particularly with regards to plot two, which is the site that's most... It's got the most sort of changes on it. We did receive an appeal, we did receive an appeal decision from the inspector back in July, where the appeal was allowed. That scheme that went before the inspector removed the integral garage from plot two and proposed a detached garage to the front of the property. One of the reasons for our refusal of that application was the possibility that the integral garage could be at a later date turned into a bedroom, and that would impact on the housing mix of the site, as stated in CP2. The inspector disagreed with that judgment. He didn't consider that it was reasonable for the council to consider that that would be changed into a bedroom, and that was the reason for them awarding, for the inspector awarding costs against us. So the applicant did have a successful costs claim. The inspector considered that the council acted unreasonably in terms of that reason for refusal. So that is a material consideration in this current application. The garage now has been removed, the external garage has been removed, and the, as Mr Bevan said, that there's a store that's attached to the side elevation. And I think he went into details about the construction of that and how it wouldn't lend itself to being an additional bedroom. But I just wanted, Chair, just to give you that sort of background on where we were coming from when the application was submitted. It was in direct response to what the inspector's comments had been, and those are a significant material consideration in the determination of any new planning application, as was the case here. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Cat, could I just check then, because it's quite a complicated issue this? That the store on plot two, the store which is attached to the house?
Yes.
Is there with the inspector's consent? Is that true?
No, Chair. So the plans before the inspector didn't have the store on, they had a detached garage to the front, and the inspector allowed the appeal on the basis of those plans. Subsequently, the developer decided not to implement that garage and has come back in with the scheme before you, which shows the store to the side elevation. Thank you.
Okay, got it. Thank you. So, members, questions? Shall we look at principle of development and design and layout?
No questions, Chair.
So that being the case, we'll go on to the rest of the report, page 32, page 33.
Again, no questions, Chair.
Thank you. So debate?
I'll kick things off, if that's okay, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Rutter.
I could basically repeat what I said with the last application. The city council turned down the original application because we felt it was overcrowding and didn't meet lots of our other policies. But on appeal, that application was permitted, and that, to a huge extent, now ties our hands. And whilst, you know, I understand the frustration of local residents, I do think it's very unfair to blame the city council for allowing a development which we refused initially, and it was only on appeal outside of our authority that it was approved. So I would ask, however, Chair, if it's possible for us to include a traffic calming element in the conditions, because I do accept the consideration of local people, that it has the potential for serious harm for residents if something is not put in there to slow down the traffic coming out of this development. And I would, therefore, if we can include that in the conditions, I don't know if that's possible, regretfully again, have to support the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. So would that be, your request would be in the access track?
Yes.
The access track?
Yes, Chair, thank you.
Cat, is that a condition that we could put on?
Thank you, Chair. No, I don't think it would be reasonable. The county council in their highways remit didn't consider it necessary, they didn't consider that there was harm in terms of highway safety by the use of the access track. So I don't think that we could go against that advice, and I don't think it would be reasonable to add a condition requiring that. Thank you, Chair.
Would it be unreasonable, Chair, to ask the developer to make some contribution to highway safety by putting up some sort of signs or something, just to show that they want to encourage people to be aware of the problems in terms of access to this site, and to ask traffic to slow down and to take care, be aware of local residents and children and so on? Perhaps that would be something that they could do out with this application. We also have two other councillors for debate, Chair. We have councillor Laming and councillor McLean. Thank you.
Thank you. I've made a note of those.
Chair, Chair, I'm sorry, Chair. Could I just come back to councillor Rutter's comments about the signage? It's not something that we could require within our planning remit. However, it might be acceptable to put that on as an informative, that the developer of the site erects some sort of signage, you know, to do with the safety of the use of the track, because it's not been determined as an issue, you know, in the planning, within the planning remit, we couldn't put that on as a condition, but certainly consider putting that on as an informative, should you and members consider this necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cat.
I asked the other two members to speak. I mean, we are coming at this with our hands tied behind our back, aren't we? Because we refused the first application, the inspector said it was allowed, and the amendments were mentioned, but he said it had to come back and be in the process, and then it's changed again because the garage goes, disappears and the store is then put on. And specifically, we didn't mention the traffic calming in the tracks to start with, and so that wasn't part of the consultation for the highways. So I do think it's important for us to indicate somewhere, and if it has to be an informative, so be it, that we would like safe exits and access to the site, because it is quite a long track. We've had some photographs sent us of that from one of the objectors. So is that okay with the committee and officers that we put an informative in about safety on that access track?
Chair, I'm sorry for that, but can we not complete the members' debates before we start putting the informatives in?
Yes, it's councillor McLean, was it? Yes. Well, we're talking about it now, I will ask for your agreement later. Councillor Laming, we're on debate. Councillor Larny?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to concur with what councillor Rutter said. We're entering this with our hands tied behind our back, which is really unfortunate because yet again, we've got retrospective coming in against something that we turned down originally, and the inspectors overawed us again. So reluctantly, I'm going to have to support this application, but it is with great reluctance.
Thank you. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. My worry is that words of sort of zoom and speeding have been mentioned on this track, but the people who are going to be on the track are going to be the residents, and I'm sure they'll be aware that they've got to drive safely on the track that comes down into their properties. If one of them starts driving too quickly, I'm sure between themselves, they'll say, do you mind slowing down? Fred, Jim, Harry. As two councillors have said, here we are again retrospective. It's madness, it's just every meeting now we're dealing with retrospectives. But no, I wouldn't be in favour of traffic calming measures, I just think it's unnecessary, it's an unnecessary expense. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice-chair, any further contributions to debate?
No further contributions, Chair.
Right, so we will move then to the vote. We still have the issue of whether we add an informative about either signage or leaving the site. Councillor McLean has indicated he's not in favour of that. Anybody else not in favour?
Chair, I think the idea is that the signage should be indicating to the people in the site that they should take care when exiting the site.
Yeah.
I agree with what he says about people in the site, but it's consideration for the neighbours on the access, on the other road that...
If I can come back on that, where would you put the signage? It would have to be flat on the fence that's running down the property, which you couldn't read from a car because you'd be looking forward.
I'm sure the developer can come up with something, councillor McLean. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Councillor Gordon Smith, have you got your hand up?
No, it's okay, sorry. Well, I have to say, I rather agree with councillor McLean. I don't think additional notices are going to make much difference actually on the driveway. I mean, if you hammer up there and kill the neighbour's children, you know, it's not how people behave on their own territory. They behave differently when they're actually out on a highway. And I'm not sure putting a sign up saying, 'Drive carefully down Downside Road', how much good it would actually do. I suppose you could paint the strip on the entrance to the drive or something, but... Okay.
Thank you. Catherine, I see you've got your hand up, that you want to give us your legal representation.
Yes, councillor, if I just may reiterate what Cat said, that we can't actually require a signage to go up, it wasn't brought as a highways consideration. So the most informative can say is that the applicant consider to put up signage, et cetera, et cetera. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. I'm afraid, Mr Spencer, I can't allow you to come back. I see you've got a hand up, but I can't allow you to come back into the meeting. So councillors, I'm in your hands, do you want an informative put on or not? We've had two people who say, no, they don't.
I would stand by an informative, Chair. Thank you.
Chair, would you help if I took a roll call on the proposal for an informative?
Well, that shouldn't be necessary. I mean, people can indicate now whether they don't agree with the informative, and then we won't put it on, but it's not legally binding, is it? So we've got two people who don't want it put on, otherwise I'm assuming that everybody else would like some sort of informative.
Sorry, Chair, I don't want it put on either.
So three people?
And I don't particularly feel that it's necessary.
I'm for it, Chair.
Chair, Chair, can I explain that there's only seven members in for-voting this time? And I think four have indicated against the informative.
Yes, they have, so we won't put the informative on. Okay. Right, I don't think we've ever had a vote on an informative before. Right, so this application has been recommended for approval. Dave will do the roll call of members present, and not including councillor Reed, who's withdrawn, and over to you, Dave.
Yes, thank you again. Councillor Clear?
Four.
Councillor Evans?
Four.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Four.
Councillor Laming?
Reluctantly, four.
Councillor McLean?
Four.
Councillor Rafel?
Four.
And councillor Rutter?
Four.
So that's all seven members in favour, Chair, one abstention.
Thank you. So the application has been approved with a certain amount of reluctance because we feel they've been forced into this position. Right, so I'm going to take a break now before agenda item eight.
Chair, before we start the next item, shall I just do a brief roll call of members?
Yes.
After the break, thank you very much. Councillor Clear?
Yes, present.
Councillor Evans?
I'm here, yes.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Present.
Councillor Laming?
Present.
Thank you. Councillor McLean?
Present.
Councillor Reed?
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Rafel?
Present.
And councillor Rutter?
Present.
Thank you, that's all members present for the next item then, Chair.
Thank you, Dave. So we have now moved to agenda item eight, which is SDNP/20/03321/HOUS, and it is Salsonstone The Avenue, Twyford, Winchester. And the application is to raise the roof to enlarge the first-floor bedrooms and reorganise the ground floor. The case officer is Hannah Harrison. Good morning, Hannah.
Good morning, Chair.
And when you're ready with your presentation, we're ready to hear it.
Thank you. Hello, committee. Today we'll be presenting a case in Twyford along the avenue. As the chairs just said, it's to raise the roof to enlarge the first-floor bedrooms and to reorganise the ground floor. Here is the location plan. Just to inform you, the conservation area runs along this High Street here and just slightly into Finch's Lane, so it does place outside the conservation area. So just to go through a few site photos, this photograph was taken of the dwelling as it stands within the avenue. Again, another photo from the avenue but on the other side of the boundary hedging, so currently you can see just a small amount of the roof. This photo was taken within the driveway of the adjacent neighbour. This photo is taken on the corner of The Crescent and the Avenue. This photo was taken along the road of The Crescent. As you can see, you can just about see the conservatory currently, but you can certainly see the neighbouring property to the left. This photo was taken along Finch's Lane. Again, the arrow is pointing to the application site, but there's minimal views at the moment. Again, a bit further along Finch's Lane, this is probably in front of one of the bigger dwellings along that road. Again, minimal views. This is along the High Street. The only view you can see is of the large green tree that's currently in the applicant's garden. And this photo was taken within the boundary, so this is facing the south elevation of the application site. And this photo was taken within the boundary, so this is facing the south elevation of the application site. It's the same location, just another view for you. These photos were taken just to give you an idea of how close the application site is to the neighbouring property. As you can see in this bottom photo, they are very close together. And this top photo is, you can obviously get quite wide views of the neighbouring property now. These photos are taken within the neighbour's residential garden. As you can see, you can see our application site here. And there's a slightly closer version just here. And again, same view at the top just here to give you an idea of how close the properties do stand next to one another. And just a different angle in the residential garden to give the longer view of the current application site. I've taken a few photos of the surrounding properties within the area. This first photograph from the top here is along Finch's Lane. The most common kind of design element that you'd see amongst all these houses are the small dormers that are placed on the front of the dwellings. And they all seem to have a common either gable or half-hit gable design for their roofs. And again, a few of these along Finch's Lane have got the flat roof in the centre, which is what this application is looking to do. And there's a lot of large dwellings opposite the application site along the avenue. But they all vary completely in different designs. But the most common design for this application is along Finch's Lane. So here are the existing floor plans of the site. Existing elevations, so these are the side elevations, west and east. The west elevation is the one that will be the closest to the neighbouring property. Then we have the north and south and a section of the existing dwelling. The south is the rear and the north is the principal elevation. So the proposed floor plans. The idea internally is to remove all bedrooms and put them into the roof space. So downstairs can be a modern living accommodation for a family. Conservatory is removed and replaced with a terrace. And here we have on the first floor, which, as I've just mentioned, all the bedrooms will be relocated. By raising the roof, they're able to accommodate the family needs upstairs as well as downstairs. And here are the elevations. So we've got the west and east elevation. And as I mentioned, the west elevation is the joining, the closest elevation to the neighbour. One small change is one of the roof lights here. And there were concerns that the large roof light would allow this applicant to be overlooking into the neighbour's property. We've reduced this and raised the sill height, so this has been amended. And here we have the north and south elevations. So this top elevation is the principal elevation and the bottom elevation is for the rear. And finally, here is a section of what we are proposing. And on the right-hand side, you have the materials proposed for the application. Originally, this was going to be render and cladding, but due to the fact that there's a lot of red brick and exposed brick within the local vicinity, we wanted to keep that here. So we've allowed the bottom to remain as brick and there'll be some cladding in certain areas and the roof will be at natural slate. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Hannah. So we will move on to the public speaking. I have down two objectors, Jane Noble and Brian Matthews. Good morning to you both.
Good morning.
If you'd like to put your cameras on.
Good morning. I believe it's only myself that's going to be speaking today.
Okay, is Mr Matthews speaking at all or?
I don't think so. I think I've got the three minutes.
Okay, yeah. And does Mr Matthews wish to join in with answering questions, if there are any at the end? No?
No, I mean, he's not answering.
So, Mr Noble, you have three minutes when you're ready.
Thank you. Good morning, councillors. Thank you for allowing me to speak at today's meeting. My name's Jane Noble and I live at Sunstone, the most immediate neighbouring property to Sarsenstone. And I'm here today to voice my serious concerns over the proposed application. The first point I think to worth drawing your attention to is the description of the application sounds almost benign. To raise the roof to enlarge the first floor bedrooms and reorganise the ground floor. Indeed, I myself was unconcerned on reading this, but in reality, it means that this current low-rise bungalow-style dwelling would become a five-bedroom, four-bathroom house. The increase in sheer size and scale and bulk required in order to achieve this transformation is vast. Whilst I'm fully sympathetic to the needs of the applicants and have spent a lot of time discussing possible ways forwards with them and their agent, unfortunately, no progress has been made to lay my fears. There have been some recent minor alterations that have so far officially been made and published, but they do nothing to address the fundamental objections made to size, scale and bulk and so provide no credible reason for any objector, myself included, to withdraw an objection made on that basis. I think it's also worth noting in terms of background that I fully supported the previous application made by the applicant in 2017. The proposal was then approved and all parties were very happy to progress on that basis. But most surprisingly, the application was allowed to lapse. I suggested that those approved plans may be the basis for the new application, but sadly this was disregarded. With all this said, therefore, I feel regretfully I've got no other alternative other than to object to the proposal for the following key material reasons. Firstly, it won't be in keeping with the immediate surrounding properties that will be incongruous. The island of immediate surrounding properties is currently characterised by nine chalet-style bungalows that are all by nature low-lying buildings. And so the impact of a much higher dwelling is likely to have a detrimental impact on the street scene. No one of these dwellings has ever raised the roof to this extent to transform into a house. So again, the nine dwellings currently remain as low-rise dormer-style bungalows. Such a drastic change of admissions would surely set a serious precedent for the future. Secondly, the sheer size, scale and bulk of the proposal does mean that the dwelling will be overbearing and overshadowing. The bulk presentation to the eastern boundary of Sunstone is significant with the eaves level being raised considerably from the existing level. In essence, the new eaves height will reach halfway up the roof of Sunstone. This also means that overshadowing would be intensified due to the small gaps which exist between the dwellings along the east boundary line. Thirdly, a loss of privacy due to increased overlooking. Given that Sunstone and Sarsenstone sit only two metres apart, the potential for overlooking is also heightened with a proposed increased number of windows that will provide direct views into Sunstone. There's also a potential loss for incoming daylight levels into the dining, kitchen and living room. In conclusion, as the immediate neighbour, my genuine hope was and still is that there must be other viable options that will be more in keeping with the immediate neighbouring properties and environment. Therefore, without significant changes to this scheme, which I understand would need to be formally advertised for public view, I would very much urge each and every one of you to please reject this application in its current form. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I was having trouble getting my... No, I did hear what you said. Thank you very much. There could be some questions for you from the committee?
No questions indicated, Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr Noble, for coming along. If you could just turn your camera off, but obviously you're going to stay in the meeting and listen to the councillors.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So if you could turn, yes, lovely. Now, we move to the ward, one of the ward councillors, councillor Sue Cook. Good morning, councillor Cook.
Good morning to you.
And when you're ready, you have five minutes.
Good morning. Thank you, councillors and officers, allowing me to speak today. We've heard this morning from the neighbour whose property is in fact a metre away from the boundary. The description we heard was to raise the existing roof, adding dormer windows to create additional headroom of the first floor and reorganise the ground floor. To be fair, that sounds more like the description of the application back in June 2017, which, as you've heard, had no objections. In fact, the neighbour at Sunstone, who moved there some six years ago, after the architect who lived there made the relevant changes and now is the architect with this application. There have been some minor alterations, we've heard. And my concern was the materials and councillor Blonk had comment of the height of the window. There has also been a discussion as to the half-hit, which I see a letter has come in from the architect at the eleventh hour and referred to a way that there could be changes. Now, out of the nine dwellings that are located on what was a pond, five are on the conservation area, three are in Finch's Lane and two are on the High Street, all of which have the dormer-style window bungalows. Sarsenstone was the last bungalow to be built and it was in keeping with all the others at the time, the island. As time has gone by, one by one, the nine bungalows have applied for planning permission and they have subsequently then been granted, but with height restrictions. Sarsenstone is the neighbour who's kept the uniformity of a dormer-style window. What I would like to bring to your attention is the local plan, DM sixteen. Now, in the current local plan for Winchester City Council, under the policy DM sixteen, Site Design Criteria, there is a reference to development will be permitted provided it responds positively in the terms of its design, scale and layout. However, surely this sheer increase in scale, size, height and bulk and the density of the proposed dwelling, particularly in such close proximity to Sunstone, the property will undoubtedly be overbearing and very much out of character. May I also quote six point four point three two? Whilst the development is likely to have impact on the locality in which they are located, proposals should not have an unacceptable adverse effect on the neighbouring land or property. In relation to neighbouring lands, carefully considered to avoid overlooking from the neighbours. Once again, scale of such development in relation to neighbouring land. More and more people are working from home and there is a light deprivation issue here. May also bring to your attention the Twyford neighbourhood plan that it currently is with South Downs waiting to have it rubber stamped. Vision and objectives, two point one states, vision for Twyford Parish. By 2036, Twyford Parish will be a more vibrant and attractive place to live, work and visit. It would have retained and enhanced its special village character. Would the National Park really want to give permission to a five-bedroom, four-bathroom property? Overbearing and the appearance would be a noticeable incrusis structure. The neighbourhood plan does not intend to prescribe detail. Consider the overall scale, density and massing, height, landscape and layout and materials and access. Remember, nine properties all are these bungalows, except if this one was to receive your permission to grant the application, it could end up being others would then wish to do exactly the same with their scale, bulk and mass. I should like to return to the letter that was sent in by the architect, raising various points about point one being the structure, the bulk of the building, the loss of daylight in certain rooms. And it is true, it does not resist development, but it was already stated to intend to prescribe details. Point six, alternative suggestions. Perhaps building to the east, many of the points in the letter were discussed, but surely why not look back at 2017 planning application, which didn't go ahead with no objections, unfortunately didn't happen? To add to all of this, as we are all aware, there's even a family that are out in France at the moment that have bought a property that don't even know this application is happening. Surely not something that we need to be re-advertised as this letter because they wanted the application to be seen more promptly? And in the world of transparency and openness, is it not a correct way to be sure of making sure that the planning application is not just a letter that is sent to make some changes? As we have heard, the immediate neighbour genuinely wants to work with this neighbour and see if there are other options in keeping with the neighbouring properties. As currently, it would end up looking a very overbearing property and application. It is for these reasons combined that I respectively ask the councillors present here today to reject this application. And I thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Thank you very much. We'll just leave a few minutes for councillors to indicate on chat if they want to ask you any additional questions.
We have a question from councillor Reed, Chair. Thank you.
Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, councillor Cook. On your request for this, on your request for this to come to the planning committee, you state the proposal plans are contrary to SM thirty-one. Presumably mean SD thirty-one. Is that correct on page one twenty of the South Down National Park?
Correct.
Just to clarify, is it just item one, A, B and C of that proposals?
Forgive me, councillor Reed. I do not have the local plan in front of me. I apologise for that. So I would allow, if I may ask the question, would you read that out? And then I will be able to agree or disagree with yourself.
A is the proposal does not increase the floor space of the existing dwelling by more than thirty percent, unless there are exceptional circumstances. Two, B, the proposal respects the established character of the local area. And C, the proposal is not overbearing of a form which would be detrimental to the amenity of nearby residents by virtue of loss of light or privacy.
The second and the third are relevant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just checking in my local plan for South Downs. Any further questions?
No further questions, Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you, councillor Cook. If you'd like to return to the sort of base position, thank you. And we have one more public speaker, Daniel Bleesdale, who's the applicant. Good morning, Mr Bleesdale.
Good morning.
Good morning. So when you're ready, you'll see the clock on, it will come on the screen. And when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and assembled councillors. I'm Dan, one of the applicants for this proposal. Firstly, to give you the context of this planning application, my partner Lucy and I want to bring our family together, which consists of us and our five children ranging age from five to thirteen. This proposed extension aims to reasonably gain space on the upper floor and provide suitable living space to allow us to remain in the village we've come to love over the past five years. We chose a local agent who knows the South Down National Park and has sympathetically designed many successful projects locally, including designing and building the neighbouring property, Sunstone. We've provided a detailed response to objections on the planning portal, but would like to outline our thoughts here. Our proposal follows the room-in-the-roof design common to surrounding properties. This design means the eaves are as low as they reasonably can be and the overall increase in height is kept to a minimum, given that our property is forty centimetres higher at ground level than Sunstone. The proposed eaves height is based on an equivalent height just under three metres at the nearest boundary, comparable to permitted development allowances and the recently approved planning permission for Little Haven, the property directly to the west of Sunstone. The planning officers report details that she assesses the proposal complies with all planning regulations, the SDNP local plan and meets environmental policy. The report also assesses that after numerous visits, the proposed elevations show a light path demonstrating that sufficient light will reach the neighbour's windows after development. And although the houses are in close proximity, due to the proposed new roof form, it will not cause harm to their amenity in terms of overbearing, overlooking or overshadowing. Although only two of the objections were from immediate neighbours, we have done our absolute utmost to engage with key objectors, especially Sunstone throughout, and are very grateful to the time councillors Cook and Bronk spent with us on-site and in correspondence. This led to us making two significant changes to the proposal, which we ratified with the parish council, namely raising and reducing the size of the west-facing roof light and significantly changing the building materials to better complement the street scene. We've approached this proposal in the most forward-leaning manner possible, listening and reacting to feedback, working hard to be sympathetic to the surrounding areas. Our efforts in addressing the objections have meant that two of the main objectors, namely the parish council and councillor Tony Bronk, have formally withdrawn their objections on size, scale, overbearing and bulk, concerns over lack of light and privacy and SD thirty-one. We are confident we've taken all reasonable steps to address objections whilst trying to reach compromise and hope the committee agree. We are confident we've taken all reasonable steps to address objections whilst trying to reach compromise and hope the committee agree. We feel our design is sympathetic to the surroundings whilst adhering to planning regulations and we simply desperately want to bring our family together to be able to continue living in the place we love.
Thank you very much, again on time, well done. We'll just wait for a few minutes to see if anyone wants to ask you additional questions. So I could ask, oh sorry, vice chair?
No, carry on Chair.
I just wanted to ask you about the overshadowing. Now, our report says on page 52 that you've chosen, you've changed the roof to ensure that it won't be overbearing or overshadowing on the adjacent sites and presumably that Sunstone which will be most affected, could you just explain that?
Okay, yes, of course. Yeah, so the design, the room-in-the-roof design has a large flat roof. So on the western side of the building, the current gabled vertical room that comes up to an apex will essentially, the roof will flatten back on itself, so it will be a sloping roof with eaves that are fully along the length of it, but a slope away from Sunstone, the neighbouring property.
I see, thank you. Vice Chair, were you going to tell me some more?
I just have one question myself Chair if I may. Thank you Mr Bleeddale. Can you just confirm, you might have said it and I missed it, exactly by how much is the roof being raised overall?
Yes, I can. The ridge height goes 77cm, but it's 40cm. The house is already 40cm higher than the property next door. So we've, you know, that's the minimum it can go up in order to achieve the design form.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Thank you Chair. No other questions.
Thank you, so thank you very much Mr Bleeddale, if you could turn your mic and your camera off. Please stay with us. Hannah, anything you want to update us on?
Nothing to update as such Chair. I would just like to mention that there obviously have been some concerns in regards to the kind of percentage increase. So SD31 allows a dwelling to be extended by approximately 30%, but the 30% limitations are only applied to dwellings with 120 square metres or less. This, the application we are talking of today has a significantly large original internal floor area, so the 30% doesn't apply. But nevertheless, the overall design is 29%, so either way it's in keeping with the 30%.
Thank you. Could I just ask you Hannah?
Yeah.
Miss Noble kindly put through our letterboxes at the weekend, a pack with some outlines in and I think I sent you a copy. Do you have any comments on the proposals of the, you know, the Miss Noble's representations of the roof lights next to her?
Thank you Chair. I unfortunately can't comment on whether they are accurate or not, because I unfortunately don't know if they're actually to scale. So I can't say if it's actually a true representation unfortunately.
Okay, thank you very much. So shall we move to questions? So if we look at page 51, the principle of development, and page 52, design, scale and impact on the character of the area.
No questions Chair.
Sorry Chairman, I did apply some time ago.
Councillor Reed, yeah.
To say that it was, I've just looked up to make sure it's still there. It's not so much, well I suppose it is a question. It's when the officer was reporting the, presenting the presentation, she identified drawings which had been amended. Have these amended drawings been noted by number in the report? I couldn't see them. To make sure that they are amended, the ones we're taking note of. The question I suppose would be, can they be, can those amended drawings be noted?
Complete amendment.
Thank you Chair. The plans that you see within your packs are the latest drawings with the amendments that I mentioned. So the materials have been changed as stated within the presentation and the roof light on the west elevation has also been changed to accommodate the concerns that were raised.
Yeah, I think that's what it was based on, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, any further questions on those two areas?
No further questions Chair.
Thank you Vice Chair. So we'll move then on to dark night skies, ecosystems, service provisions, impact on residential amenity, well virtually, or to the rest of the report.
I have a question Chair, if I may?
Thank you.
Are we taking away permitted development rights and if not, why not? Perhaps you could just let me know.
Thank you Chair. In this application, we will not be removing permitted development rights. We can't, more than anything, the site wouldn't be able to extend any further. They're within a TPO area and the applicant is very aware of how sensitive the location is. So there's no need to in this instance.
Could, I mean I don't think this is the applicant's intention, but could the applicant not extend further at the back? Obviously they can't extend on the width of the property at all.
Chairman, if I can help, we can't remove the development rights when you're dealing with a household of planning applications. The only time you can do that is at the outset when you're considering a replacement dwelling or renewed dwelling. He has his permitted development rights intact and it wouldn't be reasonable of us now on this application nor would we be able to remove those. The applicant can exercise their permitted development rights if they exist, but we can only assess this application on its merits and not remove those, it wouldn't be reasonable.
Okay, thank you. I have a further question Hannah, about the window in the western elevation, which has been made smaller and I think you said that the sill has been hired.
Yes Chair, so councillor Blonk.
So sorry.
Sorry. The window is on the west elevation roof slope. So because the neighbouring property obviously will sit slightly lower than our application site, there was concerns of overlooking and the window that they would potentially be overlooking is actually the neighbour's bathroom. So we've taken that into account, so we have raised the sill height which has naturally reduced the size of the window.
I see, so what, in what room is that window?
I believe that room, that window, sorry, is on a bedroom.
Right, but it's on, it's in the sloping roof, so you'd struggle to look out onto the next door property, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And one further question. I noticed that we haven't in the informatives on page 55, put our normal hours of working.
My apologies Chair, I can pop that in on to the report after the meeting.
Yeah, that would be good. Councillor Gordon Smith, did I see you raise a hand? No.
I think it was the applicant Chair, but he's put it down again, I'm afraid he isn't able to contribute at this stage.
Just happens to be in almost gripping councillor Gordon Smith's space. Any further questions on the rest of the report from councillors, vice chair?
No questions indicated Chair.
Thank you, so we are in debate. Any debate?
We have councillor Reed Chair.
Councillor Reed.
Thank you Chairman. Just a very quickie really. This application is an area which is covered by two local plans which overlap to some extent. The number of properties in the close vicinity of the planning site, I note, do appear to be of two-storey in general. I think the problem here is looking at the site plan, the very close proximity of the development site to Sunstone. Most of the others, though they're on the edge of their plot, there is a significant gap between them, on this one there is not. However, in that being said, I cannot think of a planning reason not to go along with the recommendation and that is what I will do. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Reed. I'll just make my contribution to the debate. I think the applicant has tried very hard to amend his application to make it sort of as neighbour-friendly as it can be. It is very close next to the next door property and I appreciate the concern of Miss Noble in that regard. But the roof has been changed to the extent that both the parish council and the other ward councillor have withdrawn their objection. It is still within the existing footprint. So it's no larger, just gone up and it's gone up by 77cm is what we've been told. So I think it's actually quite an imaginative alteration internally to try and sit in the number of bedrooms and bathrooms that it has and make the bottom area of the house much more residential family friendly. So I think we have looked at all the areas of concern and I personally can't see any planning reasons to object to this application. Vice Chair, any further contributions to debate?
Just councillor Raffel Chair, thank you.
Councillor Raffel.
Thank you Chairman. I took the opportunity Monday afternoon to walk around the avenue and look at the site. The only problem I could see with this development would be overshadowing, but I look into the paperwork and it says that they don't think that overshadowing would be a problem because of the design. So therefore I shall go along with the officer's recommendation.
Thank you very much councillor Raffel. That is all the contributions to debate.
No further debate Chair.
This application has been recommended for approval. We have the conditions set out on page 54 and we're going to add in an informative about the hours of working. So I will ask today to do the roll call of councillors to indicate how they are going to vote. Over to you Dave.
Yes, thank you Chair. Councillor Clea?
Four.
Councillor Evans?
Four.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Four.
Councillor Laming?
Four.
Councillor McLean?
Four.
Councillor Reed?
Four.
Councillor Raffel?
Four.
And councillor Rutter?
Four.
So that's all eight members in favour Chair, thank you.
Thank you. So that application is approved. That concludes the items for the morning. We seem to have got really a...